I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Ocean Township Planning Board to order. Call the roll, please.
Here.
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 Here. Salute to the flag, please.
The flag of the United States of America, and the republic of San Francisco, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
The notice requirements of the open public meeting law for this meeting have been satisfied. A copy of the notice having been sent to the Esberry Park Press and the Coaster and filed in the office of the township clerk on July 25th, 2018. There is an emergency exit through the courtroom doors and two exits at the rear of the room. There is a no smoking policy and no new cases will be started after 10:30 PM and no new testimony taken after 11:00 PM. In addition, the applicant will be limited to one hour of testimony. All meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on the Township of Ocean's community cable channel, Channel 22, on Verizon FiOS and Channel 77 on Cablevision. All cell phones must be turned off or if you need to make a call, please make your call outside the meeting room. First, we have a case carried from September 17th, 2018, Brielle Avenue LLC, block 184, lots 1 and 4, 1304-1306 Brielle Avenue, Ocean. Secondly, we have minutes for approval and those minutes are from the regular meeting of June 25th, 2018. Can somebody make a motion?
I'll offer.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next, we have the continued case of Andrew Garrity, block 904, lot 789, 238 Dixon Avenue, Elbrom Park, Zone R4. I'm going to cede the chair to Mr. Levy, who was handling this matter last time around, and he will proceed.
Thank you.
But I also just want to note that Dr. Varela and Chairman Verella also can take up the hearing, so we are all.
Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, please. Thank you. I believe that Mr. Brown had some questions, I think, regarding...
Yeah, because it's been approximately a month.
Correct.
And because we were at a certain point in the hearing, I wanted to make sure that the applicant and the board and the public are all in agreement where we were at the end of last time and where we are now. So counsel, let you and I have a dialogue.
Sure thing.
So it was my understanding that you had completed your testimony of the son of the owner.
Correct.
And then you had testimony by your professional.
Tim Laurie, who's a professional engineer and professional planner.
Correct.
Planning testimony.
And he was admitted with those credentials, correct. And you had completed that. Then, at that time, the board had questions. There were numerous comments by members of the public, right? We're all agreeing with that. Now, as I recall, by the end of the night, I don't think that all the members of the public completed their comments.
I thought they had... We're willing to have more comments if there are more comments from the public. We had the understanding that the... My understanding was the board was going to go about looking at the property and we reserved our right to address any issues and provide further testimony if that was the case. We had closed our initial presentation, but we didn't want to... We wanted to reserve the right if an issue or a question came up based upon the board's visiting the property and any other comments that came up, we could provide testimony to that effect.
So based on the limited nature of the visits by board members who wanted to go out there, your understanding was that you might be able to clarify that or make comments? And is that where you're coming from?
Correct, yes.
And if board... If members of the public had not completed all comments, then if the chair wants to recognize the public to see if there are additional comments, not redundant comments at all, but comments that did not come up before, then you... I... Mr. Chair, I would suggest that in normal procedure, counsel would have the ability to respond to additional comments.
Okay. I agree. I think that's fair.
Also, in terms of the visits, it's not necessary for board members to make any comments, of course, whatsoever. And there's no opportunity to, you know, cross-examine the board members.
Understood.
But if the board members want to say something, this would be the opportunity to make comments. That's different from when we officially close the entire hearing based on vote. Then certainly, board members, as part of the process to develop a resolution, the vote, they can comment at that time.
Understood.
And I know I'm preaching to the choir to you, but especially for members of the public, we want to make that clear. In terms of clarity, I know that this young gentleman over here is the son. And you testified. And you're pointing to a handsome-looking fellow over there. And who is he?
That's my dad, Andrew.
All right. So, and just for the record, I assume you want to make it clear that the representations by the son of the owner last time are agreed to by the owner who...
The owner who is also here if the board had any questions for the owner specifically as well.
Okay.
Great.
Very good.
Okay, so basically, when we left off, it was suggested that anyone who wanted to go out and take a look at the subject location should do so. They have a whole month to do it. Some of us got out there earlier, some of us got out there today. So I'm going to open up the... To the board to see if they had any comments after seeing... Viewing the subject location based on a visit.
Yeah. I think I went... I think I went three times. And I think there was a lot of merit to, I believe, some of the things that the other residents in the area had to say. It seemed that on two of the occasions, there were a couple of family get-togethers that really clogged up the street. There was a number of cars on the street. It was pretty crowded. It seemed that, you know, it wouldn't take much more for it to get to a different spot. And it seemed pretty congested, at least to me, kind of walking around and looking at the development. So I think there was a lot of things in there that I think the people who gave their testimony had some merit to.
Anyone else?
I did also visit three trips, weekend, weekday, night, weekday morning. And I feel much more comfortable in the decision that I think I'm going to make. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Anyone else on the board that had any... That had a visit and wants to make any kind of comment? Okay. I guess we can see if you have any cross for that.
Well, counsel, it seems to me that that was just purely opinion. No facts were brought out. I really can't imagine how you have any more testimony on... Again, based on the limited nature of where we stand right now, but certainly if you feel you can supplement or respond to facts.
And I guess maybe that's more in a closing that you have a chance to talk about it, though.
Yes, I think so. And I think we can now open up to the public again.
Sure. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Come over here. State your name, address, and be sworn in.
John Rogers. I'm at 111 Dixon Avenue.
John Rogers, you were here last time?
I did, yeah. And I won't be redundant with my remarks.
That's great. And so you were under oath last time, and so without going through that exercise again, you understand that your...
Still under oath.
Comments are under oath, right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'd just like to thank the members of the board for coming out to the neighborhood and taking a look at it. You know, for those of you who weren't here, I know, Mr. Varela, you didn't participate last time. Congratulations on being sworn in. You see what happens when you miss a meeting. But congratulations on being the chair. I did want to just point out one thing, and I mentioned this briefly last time, so I don't want to go against what I just told Mr. Sanford. But I think if you haven't had a chance to look at the neighborhood and you can see where the site plan is and where the property is located on the corner, I think you'll see that what is being contemplated here is to take a set of property that's already conforming and trying to make it non-conforming. So for the members of the board, I think for the neighbors, we feel quite strongly that for that one block of Dixon Avenue, it's entirely inappropriate. So I just wanted to put that on the record again. Thank you again for coming out and taking a look.
Anyone else?
For the record, no one else in the audience has taken the opportunity to raise his or her hand. So I think, Chairman, I think you could allow counsel to give us a nation which is requested.
Mr. Warren.
Thank you. I appreciate all the time and effort that the board has put into this application and the applicant does as well. We know this has been one that you've been thinking about. You've gone out and visited the property. I just wanted to kind of run through the testimony that we had presented to you before summarizing it. It's been a month and presented in a summary fashion. Again, the property is in an R4 zone, which had the purpose of smaller lot sizes to conform to the existing lot sizes in the area. We had provided testimony from a professional engineer indicating that the benefits of granting the variance outweighed the detriments. It met the following goals of municipal land use law. It provided adequate air space, light, open space. It provides appropriate population densities and concentration, and it promotes a visually desirable neighborhood. It does all of those things by instead of... Right now, the way the property is, is one lot. It's an oversized lot in the area. We're looking to subdivide it. One lot will be a conforming size, not the width, but the size will be conforming. The other one is an 800-square-foot variance. It'll be short, 800 square feet, which our planner considers to be a de minimis impact or exception. But by subdividing the lot into two, instead of with one large lot, you can present a much larger house that's there that can continue almost the entire width of the property versus having this property subdivided into two. It creates two smaller houses. It only has the ability to develop it as two smaller houses, which will create a break in between. Instead of having one massive, longer wall, which creates a massing effect, you're going to have house setback of at least 20 feet in between the two houses, then more house. Instead of having that as an entire massing space. That allows for the appropriate light, circulation, and air. And again, it meets the goals of the R4 zone, which specifically works to provide smaller lots in the area in conformance with the other lots. The testimony that our planner gave as well as the township's planner confirmed is that it is not out of character for a lot of the lots in the area. There are a number of smaller lots in the area. These will be larger size than many of those lots. So because of that, there's not going to be a detriment. The applicant, to help ensure there is no detriment, had agreed to, and we agreed this would be condition of any resolution of approval if granted, to shift the setback. The setbacks require a total of 25 feet, minimum of 10. We agreed we would keep the 15 feet to the neighboring property owner and have the smaller setback 10 between the two proposed new houses. We also indicated that we would live and would agree that those houses, any proposed houses on the property, would have to meet the setbacks and they wouldn't be permitted to come for a variance. That that would be a condition of this resolution of approval, that any home to be built would be within those setbacks. So again, the... What we believe is the ability and basically the board, if the board grants a subdivision, it's setting up the property to be developed more in accordance with the lines of all the other properties that are developed out there. It takes away the opportunity for a large, massive house to be built on the lot out to the setback areas. Again, the smaller house, it creates... It forces the development to be into two smaller houses, again, which is in conformance with the ordinance or the intent of the ordinance, and it's not going to negatively impact those different properties. I know there was questions about... Mr. Weinstein had raised about different congestion in the neighborhood. The difference between... At the end of the day, you're going to have one larger house. Actually, if you do the calculations on the math and you look at it, the one larger house can have more square footage than the two smaller houses. And there's no number... No limits on number of bedrooms in the ordinance in the township. So one house could have more bedrooms and more people than two smaller houses because the square footage of the two smaller houses, if you maxed out the property, are going to be less that way. So that's an issue. I also would caution the board, and I don't... That may not be the right word. We believe it would be more appropriate for the board to... The single-family home is a permitted use in that area. Whether it be one or two, it's still a permitted use. And the distinction between one larger house, which could possibly be more square footage and more bedrooms, versus the two smaller houses, just because it's two households, if you're based upon square footage and permissible bedrooms, there really is not going to be much of a difference that way as to causing any population increases or density issues in the neighborhood. And I think, based upon those reasons, we believe we had provided testimony, which I do not believe has been contradicted by either the board's own professionals or any testimony on behalf of the neighbors that showing that we have not met the planning goals. And we've... I understand where the neighbors are coming from, that they're giving opinions as to what they believe may be concerns on there, but they have not provided any credible planning testimony to contradict the testimony that's been provided by the applicant's professional planner in his opinion that we meet the goals of the municipal land use law, the ordinance, that the variance can be granted and the benefits of granting the variance will be substantially outweigh any detriments if the variance is granted.
Okay. We want to... I'm sorry.
Sandy, it was discussed last month about if it went towards the one house about a deed restriction.
Yes.
I didn't hear that come up tonight, if it went that way.
We're happy to put that in, and I apologize. That's what I meant by indicating we've agreed the setback would be higher on that side, but I'm happy to... We're happy to put a deed restriction to that effect.
If it went that way.
If it went that way. Obviously, it's accepted.
No, no. If it's approved. Counsel, would you clarify what you meant by offering a deed restriction?
If the application is approved and the board had concerns and they wanted to have this 15-foot setback on the side closest to the neighbor rather than having the abilities... The ordinance has a minimum of 10 and a total of 25, so it could slide anywhere from 10 to 15. We'd agree in the resolution, if you needed a deed restriction, that that side yard setback would always be a minimum of 15 feet for the principal structure.
All right. You're complete with your subation, all right? And the board could make comments or you could close the hearing and then move to the resolution stage, at which time you can discuss your feelings.
That's good. If there's no other comments from the board, I think we can close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Chairman, I would suggest that we... There are different ways of handling this. You could ask someone to offer a resolution with a second, and then you can deliberate on that. And you can see if there's consensus and add the rationale for that as part of the vote.
Let's do that.
I'll offer a motion.
And what is the motion?
The motion is to vote on... To the approval of this... Of the...
Are you offering to approve the application or deny it?
I'm going to make a motion to deny the application.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Dialogue and discussion on that?
You mean like my thoughts on why?
Yeah.
Yeah. My thoughts on it was that although variances were given in the past, I'm not sure that that was necessarily in the best interest of the community as the community has kind of evolved. And I could listen to the testimony on how it evolved and how these lots and these properties have turned into other properties that the other... That people who made them their primary residence weren't really kind of anticipating. And so my feeling is that there's a good chance that moving these into sub... Into two different... Into two lots instead of one kind of accelerates that situation that's there today.
Maybe I could ask a question to allow the board members to hone in more on the particularity as counsel has discussed with the board and public. So of course, anytime we have a variance application, there's a burden of proof by the applicant to prove the positive and negative criteria. You heard the expert last time talk about those criteria. And so counsel, I believe, has conceded that this is not a C1 hardship variance. It's really a flexible C variance, which we hear quite a bit. But again, because of, you know, the dialogue we had last time, maybe it merits me to go over the fundamentals as counsel was talking about. So the applicant has the burden of proof to show under the positive criteria that the deviation proposed is supported by reasons under the MLUL. And that's under 40,55 D-dash-two. I will let counsel tell me if I'm getting it wrong, but as I remember the testimony by the expert, there was a reference to some of the particular provisions. And so you have to focus in on, did the applicant prove that by granting this deviation, you would be doing so to enhance some of the purposes? And that could include C, to provide adequate light, air, and open space. Also, would it promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, and communities? The rest of it, I think, is not relevant, except you might consider the end phrase, end preservation of the environment. And the last, as I recall, which is the standard, is, did they prove that allowing the deviation would promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangements? Statutory language. So did they prove that to you based on everything you've heard? Counsel also has appropriately pointed out that for every C2 application, not only is there burden to prove the positive, but the negative. And just to complete, almost paraphrase what counsel was emphasizing under the C2, you are permitted only if they have satisfied the following proofs. Wherein this application to this specific piece of property, the purposes of this act, that's what I was referring to, would be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements. And the benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment. That's the criteria. That's the balancing test. Now for the negative, which has to be proven, of course, in any C variance. They must also prove that the application can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will, and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Okay.
If I might... Yeah, if I might, I wanted to clarify something because this is intended to be neutral. You have an applicant... You have a proposed vote on whether... Or right now to deny an application to subdivide. Some of the arguments have been presented, and more particularly in summation tonight, at least in my opinion, as I heard them, seem to be presenting to you as a choice. You know, if you deny it, as right now the current proposal is up before the board, then you're going to get this massive house. That's not necessarily so. You may. But in this town, the buildable lot area, okay, is whatever the ordinance allows in terms of building coverage, percentage of buildable lot area total. Buildable lot area is, in this zone, without getting into particulars, 75% of total lot area. It's the same number, buildable lot area total, and hence, building coverage total, is the same whether it's in two houses on two lots or one home on one lot as a maximum. It is absolutely true that if there is a subdivision ultimately, that there would be a gap between them. But in terms of a choice between having a big home or two little homes, that is not necessarily true. You could end up with the same exact amount of building coverage, building floor area, building bedrooms, whether it's one lot or two lots. So I wanted to make that clear.
And in my comment, you know, I didn't add in particular facts to insert in there. I mean, I can go into it, but I think it would probably be better if the board discusses the facts that you heard, the conclusions, factual conclusions that you're coming to as it relates to the criteria.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Yes.
Since the resolution was listed as a negative, if you will, by voting yes, can you explain what each means? And I don't mean to sound...
Sure.
Just so we're clear.
Yes. Well, actually, there are two ways to handle this. So sometimes there are positive resolutions that don't pass because the majority of the quorum doesn't apply. So it's a majority of the quorum, right? In this particular case, it's a negative resolution, and that's also proper. So let's say hypothetically, if there is not a majority vote, then you can have a... Then you can move to a positive resolution.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yes.
Okay.
And if it's not successful, then it's the same as a denial. Okay?
If the positive is not.
Yeah. If you... In other words, if you have...
Okay.
If you pass Mr. Weinstein's resolution, that's the end of the issue. But if it doesn't prevail, then that's not the end of the matter because it's a negative resolution. I suggest you have a positive resolution, see if it has the majority required.
Yep. Thank you.
If a positive resolution doesn't have a majority vote, then it's also denied. But the reason why I didn't object to Mr. Weinstein's motion at all is because ultimately, it's better practice to have particular findings if there is a negative consensus. Okay?
Thank you.
It doesn't happen sometimes, but I think that's better practice.
With him.
But I think what Mr. Sarah was asking is that if, on a negative resolution, if you say yes, that means you mean no.
Correct.
That I got.
Yeah.
Okay. That one I know.
I just wanted to make sure. You all understood that.
Let me clarify it. So if your vote is that you don't think that the requested relief should be granted, then based on the motion that has now been seconded by Mr. Weinstein, you vote in the affirmative. That means that you don't think that the requested relief should be granted. That's where we stand right now.
Okay.
Is everybody clear as can be on that?
You vote yes, you're voting no on the subdivision.
Right. Right. That's what I...
And in your reading of what you've read before about what the criteria is, right? The basic one was, does it overall help the... the basic one was, does it overall help the community? And do we show that there's an overwhelming reason why it helps the community? Or at least 51% helps the community more than it hurts the community?
Substant-
Substantial is, I don't know.
I would be, I would have to go back to the statutory language and be careful about that. So you really should apply the specific standards and not insert other language, but there has to be a positive purpose that is set forth under D2.
To grant the variance.
And you did allude to generally what I was talking about in terms of the positive criteria that has to be proven, which includes light and air space, but it also deals with population densities, etc., exactly as I quoted to you, because that's the statute, and that's what we need to be careful to to vote on, and not not to insert analogous language, because it's just the muddiest word. Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
Oh, yeah. So here's where I'm at on this one. Looking at the positive and negative criteria, we heard a whole lot about houses tonight, but we're not looking at site plans. We don't know what a potential developer could come in with. We've heard the possibility of a side yard setback.
That's not relevant.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, that's exactly what I'm saying, it's not relevant. It's, we don't have that before us. All we have before us is a subdivision of two lots. We're looking at a neighborhood that was developed many, many years ago, and a lot of these homes are older, and we are now talking about granting a variance that's going to deviate from what we set forth in our zoning plan that was laid over the existing neighborhood, right? This neighborhood was built before our current zoning, so then we are going, that set forth what we want to see, this municipality wants to see, in the population density there. So then we're looking for a variance to potentially deviate from that and go for smaller lots. That's the negative criteria to me, that we're going to have smaller lots. We can't consider what could or may be, we're just looking at this in front of us. And from all the testimony that we've heard, I'm just not convinced that the positive criteria of more space and land, based on what's there, is enough to overrule the potential, well, not the potential, the negative criteria of deviating from the current zoning plan. We put the zone in there and the density for a reason, on top of what was existing. I would think that there was a reason for that. I was not part of the board then, I don't think any of us were, that was back in the 70s. So that's where I am. I don't see the positive criteria at all outweighing the negative criteria here. And this is, this is close, I'm, this isn't super clear to me, but that's where I fall on it.
Anyone else?
Call for a vote?
Yep, call for a vote.
Resolution, memorialization, whichever way it goes, will be at the next meeting.
Okay, we already have the motion and second, so Mr. Chairman.
No.
Mr. Brody.
Yes, I'm a negative.
All right, let me just clarify. Sarah, do you believe that the application should be passed?
No.
Then your vote is yes.
I'm sorry, the you said the application, not the motion.
The vote.
Clarify what you're saying.
Are you in favor of Mr. Weinstein's negative resolution?
I am not.
Okay, very good. I want to clarify that Mr. Brody seemed to be hesitant, so, Mr. Brody, if you voted yes-
Yes.
You meant to indicate that you're in favor of the negative resolution.
Correct.
Okay, very good.
So yes?
Yes.
Dr. Benadetto?
No.
Ms. Delia?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
No.
Mr. Sienna?
No.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Chairman Burley?
Yes.
Final vote?
Five, four.
Three, four, no.
Majority of the quorum is in favor of the negative resolution. Resolution offered by Mr. Levy passes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Mr. Weinstein.
Okay, it's over.
Okay, Council, thank you for your appearance. Right now, the meeting is now back with our-
Passing back over to Mr. Varelli. Okay, at this point, make a, would somebody make a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much.
You.